We are all set with the TV.
All right, thank you. Good evening, I will bring the the meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission of May 3rd, 2021 to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Or nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Andrea, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Present.
Commissioner Clemens?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Vice Chair Roof?
Present.
And Chair Garvey.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. I'd like to take a brief moment now to describe the public comment item. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on the future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak on an item this evening that is not on our agenda? There's a little raised hand icon that should be at the bottom of your screen, and if you'd like to speak, you can click on that. Sarah, do you see anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from our April 19th, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No.
None for me.
And none for me either. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April 19th, 2021 of the Planning Commission of San Carlos.
And I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
I'm gonna abstain as I was absent at that meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, a public hearing. I'm going to read the procedure now for a public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Tonight's public hearing is consideration of general plan conformity for the County of San Mateo's acquisition of approximately 0.16 acres of land located at the corner of El Camino Real and F Street. Assessor's parcel number 045320100. Does staff have a presentation on this item?
We do, thank you. And I'm just gonna check with Sarah if you could either advance the slides or make me co-host and I'll go ahead and do it. There we go, let's try that. There we go. Andrea Martisich, Principal Planner, good evening commissioners. As Chair Garvey mentioned, tonight we will be considering the request for adoption of a resolution binding conformity with the City of San Carlos's general plan for the County of San Mateo's acquisition of about 0.16 acres of land located at the corner of El Camino Real and F Street. And this site does not have an address, so throughout the report as well, you'll see us referring to it by the APM, which is there on the screen. There we go. So as I mentioned, this is located at the border of San Carlos and Belmont. The picture on the left is the site itself, and that wall you see on the right is the back of the CVS store on El Camino. So to the left is F Street, which is the border of Belmont, and to the right is the CVS on El Camino Real. There are mix of uses in the area. Immediately south is the retail plaza. Across the street is office and hotel. And then to the north are office buildings as well. To the east, the immediate east are the Caltrain train tracks, and then beyond those, light industrial area on the east side. The general plan designation for the site is mixed-use medium density, and I've listed the definition of that, what the general plan says that would allow, and it is both commercial and multifamily uses at residential densities of 50 units per acre. And I just wanted to go over very quickly why this item is before you this evening. According to Government Code, which is our state code, Section 65402, any local agency cannot acquire or sell any real property without first getting a determination of conformity with the city's general plan in which the site is located. So the action before you this evening is really focused on that item. It does not in any way approve any proposal on that site or any design on that site. It is strictly just to determine whether the proposed use is in conformance with the city's general plan. So this is an excerpt of our general plan map. The site is fairly small. You can see this little red area here that is the subject site, again, right on the border of Belmont and San Carlos. The map, as you can see, talks about all of the various densities within the city that are allowed. And again, this one is the mixed-use medium density, which is up to 50 units per acre. The proposed use of affordable housing at this site is conforming with that general plan designation. And very quickly, before I move on, just to provide a little bit more background. This property is currently owned by the Water District in Belmont. The County of San Mateo, specifically the Housing Authority, is proposing to buy this site for affordable housing. In the future, any proposal at this site would come forward again for design review, as well as any other entitlements that are needed. So before us this evening are several general plan policies that staff has found to support this type of use at this location. Specifically within the land use element, there are various policies and goals regarding TOD, development, transit-oriented development along El Camino Real and the Caltrain corridor. Also, supporting uses in that corridor that will attract and serve ridership on public transit. As the Climate Action Plan is updated, which it is currently being updated as we speak, there are measures in there about locating housing again near transportation. We also want to promote development opportunities for physical activity by locating residential developments near services, maintaining diversity of land uses, and also striving for a balanced ratio of jobs and housing units. And as I'm sure you're all aware, we're very short on the housing units in terms of the jobs-housing balance. In terms of our housing element, there are several goals in here that focus on displacement of lower-income residents, encouraging a diversity of housing choices of various types in various price ranges as well, providing an adequate number of affordable housing units to the various affordability levels, especially extremely low, very low, and low-income households, households, excuse me. Making sure that the applicants and developers are aware of the city's flexible standards, intended to encourage production of new housing, affordable housing specifically, and then continuing to support local agencies and organizations that provide housing services to San Carlos residents. And then in terms of the circulation and scenic highways element, again, supporting transit-oriented development with mixed land use, that's also one of our denser areas in the city, to provide more density but also a good link to transit. In terms of the land use, or in terms of any of these goals in the general plan, these ones are specifically related to the proposal of affordable housing. We're anticipating that once a specific project is proposed, there will be additional policies that are also supported once we know the specifics of the project itself. And then in terms of the site, the housing element also has a policy that encourages new housing development within this plan area of the general plan along El Camino Real. If this project were to move forward, based on our current zoning and density and based on the size of the lot, a maximum of eight units could be built on site. However, as you're aware, there's the ability to add additional units through various state and local incentive programs for affordable housing, so the resulting number of units could be higher. And again, this will be determined and known as part of the design phase of the project. And then, again, just to reiterate that any decision tonight is related strictly to the general plan and does not obligate the city to approve the new project as proposed. In terms of noticing, the city mailed a notice to property owners within a 300-foot radius and also published that in the newspaper. Staff has not heard any comments from anyone regarding this item. I am available for any questions, and we also have two representatives here from the Housing Authority who could also answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Let me make sure I'm not on mute. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Andrea, for that excellent presentation. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for Andrea? Before we see if anyone from, Andrea, does anyone from the Housing Authority want to speak, or they are here to answer questions?
I believe they are here to answer any questions. I am not able to.
All right. Does anyone on the commission have any questions of Andrea or the Housing Authority? This is a good opportunity to ask.
I do, I can kick us off just for a minute. Andrea, thank you for the very thorough analysis. I appreciate all of the findings of consistency. It helps the new commissioner get oriented. I had three questions. I think they're all pretty simple. Little confused as to the applicant. The application was signed by the county, but the staff report refers to the County Housing Authority. The letter was also signed by the county, so what is the entity that is actually the applicant? Is it not the county?
It is the county, however, contacts and questions have been through the Housing Authority. So I'm assuming the county is the legal signing authority for that.
Yeah, it's on the letterhead, although the signature block was for the county, so I was just a little confused. My second question is, this is an extremely small site to build affordable housing on. Is there a plan to assemble parcels for the county? Or it's not, I know it's not to remain, it may be part of the project. I was just curious. This is a very unusually small parcel.
I'll go ahead and ask Danielle, Kate Master, if that's okay?
Please.
And Danielle's with the Housing Authority.
Hello, hi, good evening, everyone. No, we don't have any plans to do that so far. And just a quick comment about the Housing Authority. We are with the county, not the Housing Authority, who submitted this application.
Got it. So are you saying the staff report should just be amended to refer to the county alone?
Yes, the Department of Housing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I had just one more question about CEQA, Andrea. If you'll bear with me for a minute. I understand this finding of consistency needed for the county to acquire, and I understand that this is apart from any proposal that will go forward for the project, so I understand the CEQA clearance for that would be completely separate. But at what point, and maybe this is a question for Kimberly, I know there's law about piecemealing for CEQA as well, and I'm wondering how staff or how council thought about the finding of consistency for a project versus, you know, the project or any land use action regarding the project.
Sure, I'll go ahead and start that, and Kimberly will probably have more to add on the legal side. So as you mentioned, Commissioner Clemens, there is this idea of piecemealing projects under CEQA, which is not allowed, as you're not able to get a full picture of the possible impacts when you do that. In this case, because the action is strictly about consistency and does not entitle any project yet, we used the exemption 15061, which says basically that if there's no action that's going to be a result of the decision, and there's no obvious impact on the environment, that it couldn't, it's not subject to CEQA. My other part of that answer would be that, once we know and receive a proposal for a project there, then we would, you know, start the, figure out what either exemption or what level of review would need to be done once we had more details on the project itself. So that's my answer, but I'll see if Kim has anything to add to that as well.
I don't have anything additional to add. I concur with what staff has responded with.
Thank you very much.
All right, I see Vice Chair Roof has his hand up. Commissioner Roof?
My question was related to Kristin's about the small size of the plot. Not so much the small acreage, but the narrow width, and I wondered, how wide is that? It's probably, it was in the document, but I forget. But is that wide enough to accommodate normal housing? Is it, can you, I think the answer is going to be yes, or you wouldn't be here, but it'd be nice to hear how the housing could fit on that shape of a lot.
Sure, and I'll defer to Danielle on their thought process for that, but what I can contribute for that is we do have, we don't really have minimum unit standards, other than, you know, the minimum efficiency units that are required under the law. In addition, because this project would be for affordable housing, there's also a lot of exceptions and exemptions that could be provided to the project. So agreed that it's a small lot, and there's not as much flexibility as we would see in some of our other infill projects, but they do have some exceptions and tools that will help at least get more units in there and, you know, reduce setbacks, things like that, and reduce parking, I should say, which would also save some room. And then if Danielle has anything to add from the county.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Yeah, it's definitely a small site. We can possibly do townhomes or something along those lines that could possibly fit on that site, but yeah, we haven't figured that out yet, but I'm assuming townhomes would possibly be the answer for that.
I see, so if you have a multi-story for a single unit, then that can, yeah, that way you can fit it. A smaller footprint. And I was sort of expecting apartments at the maximum density when you mentioned townhomes. Suddenly I'm thinking, oh, is this, what level of affordability is the target for this housing? Do you know that yet?
I believe we're targeting very low and low income.
A lot of questions about the project, but I wanted to hold this off until we, kind of project in front of us, but Mr. Roof is making me want to ask all of them, so I'm gonna hold back still.
Just to jump into, we want to be really careful about talking too much about the specific project, since the project itself isn't agendized. But again, the housing plan and design and all that would be coming before you for review.
For sure. I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that the designation of the land for this purpose made sense.
Thank you.
That's the only question I have.
All right. Any other questions of staff or the Housing Authority before we see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item?
This is more of a comment than a question, but I think the site is too small for even eight small units. The shape and the size, the area just doesn't support very much. But I'm willing to agree to let it go through so we can see a proposal and what it might benefit, but I think it's not, maybe it's in the public interest, but it's not good planning. Thank you.
If I could, for Andrea, just to follow up, you mentioned maybe twice about the opportunity for exemptions. Could you describe what some of those might be like? What would they include? What would they affect?
For, so I know, I can provide some information. I actually think Commissioner Clemens would know a lot more about the specifics of it, but depending on the proposal, there's things that can be either waived or reduced, such as parking requirements, setback requirements, height, there's a state density bonus. There's also some additional exemptions for a project that's 100% affordable versus a project that's just providing one or two affordable units. So the more affordable units as a percentage, the greater number of either exceptions or exemptions they can get. Some of those are just allowed outright. For example, I believe there's required reduction in parking for affordable projects. But then again, if they don't meet the, they don't meet the parking based on that, there's concessions the cities require to give if a certain number of units are provided. So it really comes down to what's being proposed. And just to clarify, too, we don't know the number of units yet. The staff report talks about eight units being max, but that's just based on the density and the site size. So once we know the project specifics, we'll know more about what some of those concessions could be. But again, the big ones we've seen are parking height and number of stories are the ones we've seen sort of around town as the big ones. And FAR, excuse me, the four-area ratio.
Great, thank you. Maybe the follow-up somewhat related is, I think there were findings about consistency with transportation demand management. It just strikes me as this is kind of in the halfway between stations, and it doesn't seem to fit with, you know, an easy walking commute for people to get to the train. So do you have a different, does staff have a different point of view as to why this sort of makes sense in terms of, you know, consistency with, you know, building housing near public transportation?
Sure. So two things. One is the bus stops and the bus routes on El Camino. We would also consider those in addition to the train stations. And then again, also the proximity to each train station is pretty reasonable on bike, for example. So we also take that into account in terms of all the TDN measures, but the big one in this case would be the bus routes. And the stops, sure.
So just to build on that, you could get on the bus right near CVS and then just take the bus down to one of the train stations and get off and get on the train. You could trip link.
Or, correct, or take the bus to, you know, wherever you need to go without taking, yeah.
Commissioner Yakaponi, did you have any further questions?
I'm all set. Thank you for asking.
All right. Any other questions of staff or the Housing Authority or the county before we see if there's anyone in the public waiting room who wishes to speak? All right, hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, Chair Garvey, I'm not sure if you can see my raised hand.
I do see it now, thank you.
Okay, just one quick question for the county. With a site like this, does the county tend to issue a request for proposals and work with a developer to develop the site, or does the county ever use its Housing Authority powers to develop the project itself?
Yes, typically we'd release an RFP for a developer, and also we're releasing an RFP for a service provider.
Thank you. I have one other question, which is this site is within incorporated San Carlos. Does the county often acquire parcels within the city limits of the cities in the county, or does it focus more on unincorporated county? Or both?
I'd say both. I'm not sure if my colleague Brian is on here, but I believe both.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment. Does the Water District, who is selling the land, have any issues with this transaction? I'm guessing that they're not here tonight. I'm sure that they, but they are a party to this, no?
Correct, yes. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Dana.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, no, I'm not aware of any concerns, but Danielle would know better than I.
Yeah, same, no concerns.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room? All right, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak? And if you are in the waiting room, you can push star nine on your phone, or you can use the raised hand function.
None at this time.
All right. Seeing that there's no one to comment, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Andrea, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. All right, we've heard from staff and the county as well. I'll now I'll now open up the meeting for discussion amongst commissioners. Who would like to start?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation to find a site in conformance with the general plan.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, if we're going to discuss before we say yes, I'm sort of thinking we are all going to fall over each other to endorse the idea that we like more affordable housing in the city. And so the concept is a great one, and to me, it seems to meet all of the criteria that would be necessary. We'll be looking forward to seeing how they'll use that shape of land, but I assume there must be a solution. So I'll be voting in favor when we get to the vote.
Garvey, point of order, should there be a second taken before the discussion or in the course of the discussion?
I think we can have a second, yes, and then we can have discussion. Is there a second on the motion?
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Roof. And now, is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
I'm just wondering if, since the County Water District owns this, is there a major pipeline through there that would prohibit us from, say, putting underground parking under these townhomes or apartments? Does anyone know?
I am, this is Andrea Martasich, Principal Planner. I'm not aware of that. In terms of submittal requirements, we didn't require yet a title report or survey in which we would know that. I'm not sure if the county has any idea there.
No, we did have a survey done, and there was nothing on there.
Thank you.
I will agree with Vice Chair Roof. We are very short on housing in San Carlos, very short on affordable housing. This project takes us one small step in the right direction. I'm looking forward to the proposal. One of the things I like about the project is it's right on a bus line, and you can easily walk to shops and services that will be very close, right next door.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that comment Chair Garvey made. I think that developing additional housing, especially on small infill sites like this along El Camino, is a very good strategy, as long as the project's feasible, which is not our problem tonight to decide. And so I will be curious to see what the density comes out at, because I know there's a, there is a lower density. It's up to 50, but it's down to, what, 20?
21, I think.
21. Sorry, in the staff report. So I'll be curious to see how that is managed here. I also think it'll be very expensive, of course, but that is also not our challenge. And I'm happy to see kind of creative strategies to get more housing into places that it's appropriate. And along a bus line, right next to a drugstore, right walkable to, it is not a quick walk, but it's certainly walkable down to the train station on either side, including farmer's markets as well, so in Belmont frequently. So I'm in support of this site.
Any other discussion before we ask Andrea for a roll call? Hearing none, a roll call, please. On the motion, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you to the county and the Housing Authority for, that was a very informative discussion, and I think I speak for the commission when I say, we're looking forward to seeing the proposal, which I understand is coming sometime in the future. All right, moving on to reports, correspondence, and general information. Report on City Council actions. Andrea, anything for us this evening?
So just to let you know, the last two meetings of the City Council were study sessions for the budget. So that's pretty much what the entire meeting was focused on. So nothing other than that update for City Council.
All right, moving on to planning commission comments or reports. I don't have anything. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or reports this evening?
Well, I'll just say that we had an RDRC meeting that ran up to about three minutes before this meeting started, covering three projects, two which were approved, and one that was postponed because of some conflicting arborist reports on removal of two big redwood, redwood trees on the site on Margarita, or Margalita. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, correspondence. Any correspondence? Does anyone have any correspondence to put on the record?
None from staff.
All right, moving on to planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects.
Sure, just a few brief items. Earlier today, Lisa Porras, our planning manager, sent an email with upcoming items coming before the planning commission. And if you haven't seen that yet, there are quite a few exciting things coming in the next few months. However, the next meeting on May 17th is, will be canceled. There are no items for that. So you will have a break for the next meeting. One point of clarification on the email, I believe it was August 23rd, which was mentioned as a break. That should actually be August 16th, the third Monday of the month. So that was a typo. Also wanted to let you know, on May 10th, we will be taking a study session item to City Council, just to receive direction. One of the council members had indicated an interest in looking at our penalties for illegal heritage tree removal, as well as replanting. In doing the research for that presentation, staff will also be making the recommendation to actually open up the ordinance itself and look at everything, basically. So if that is so directed by council on May 10th, for us to do that, we will be working on that this summer. And that will, of course, come to the commission as well, once we have some ideas to study. And I believe that is it.
All right, Andrea, thank you very much, and understanding that no meeting of the commission in two weeks. So we will adjourn and see everyone back here the first Monday in June. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting, Ellen.